All right. Good morning, everybody. It's eight three. We'll call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, December 28th. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and I have asked that Attachment C, number, there would be bullet point number three on the consent agenda, be moved out of consent.
Move to approve with the removal.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do you have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda this morning? Any citizens to be heard? Steve?
That's Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. We will move into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve bills and vouchers?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We have before us the approval of the minutes from December 14th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Our eight thirty-five item is our COVID update, and we have with us via Teams meeting, we have Kathy and Jamie and Becky. And Kathy, I believe Steve's going to run the deal for you, but you're, go ahead, Kathy. Good morning.
Oh, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. Are you hearing me okay?
We hear you fine, yes.
Okay. And I have my, I have my screen up, so I can't tell. But Steve, I'll let you know. Is, is, there it is. Okay. Sounds good. So I'll start with our usual data. So our active cases in Clay County, you can see December 21st, they were 397. And the 27th now, again, due to the holiday weekend, the numbers haven't quite caught up. The active numbers have declined to 325. So depending on when they catch up, it's not exactly an accurate number. But the active cases in Minnesota, we also see 27,85 on the 20th, and then 26,106. So again, they may catch up a little bit after Christmas weekend. Active cases in Cass County, same thing with their number is 696, and now their number is 599 for the 27th. And active cases as well, 2100 on the 20th, and now we see a spike of 1858. And again, maybe they catch up because of the holiday in there. Okay, next slide. The active cases by age. So again, this is our breakdown of age groups. So we continue to see the high numbers in the kids and the young adults. The largest spike number is that 35, 39 age range, but then we see quite a variant high numbers in this, even from zero to four to 15 to 19 being some of the active cases, highest rates. Next slide. This one is the cases per week.
Finish the week.
Is that one of the number groups? Did I?
I think we're working on it here, Kathy. If you can just hang on a minute. There we go.
Okay, there we are. Weeks have added to current. This is just the overview of the cases, which were raised all the time. We see the case numbers climbing after that summer low. And then that gray bar at the very end is really a preliminary number for cases from the 19th through the 25th of December. So that's at 152 so far, and that number again will likely go up once the data catches up. And this is our case trends per week, so starting in March of 2020, the beginning kind of when we started those cases on the pandemic. And then it shows the overview of those four main waves we've seen in comparison to where we are currently. And this is the cumulative cases by age. We see a total of 13,080 since March of 2020. And this graph again shows the breakdown of the numbers in all those age categories. And we see the highest number in the 20 to 24 range, and then in the 30s, 30 to 40 range, there's some high numbers as well. And that's cumulatively. And I think Becky, do you want to continue with the transmission?
Yes, I can do that. Good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Hear you fine, yes.
Well, this graph shows updated, graph, community level of community transmission. It's remained unchanged. The entire state of Minnesota remains at that high level of transmission. So this is for cases reported December 15th through the 25th.
Next slide.
We have the missed graph shows Clay County deaths reported for a week. Unfortunately, we have had two more reported deaths since last week. So we are in a total of 113 deaths in Clay County residents throughout the pandemic. This is hospital admissions for Clay County residents per week. Only had one admission reported so far for last week, and 10 for the week before. So cautiously optimistic that we might be seeing a steady decrease in hospitalizations over the next couple weeks, but there's still a lot of unknowns as Omicron has become the most prevalent strain surgery now. So we'll see as the weeks go on. Next slide. And then hospital capacity information for our local healthcare systems is shown here. Available staff beds continue to be a concern, especially for pediatric patients. So at the time of this report, there were a total of 14 staffed, adult ICU beds available in Fargo, and one pediatric ICU bed available. You'll notice, though, that the pediatric bed availability for Stanford was not available at the time of this report, and the VA's information hasn't been updated since the 16th of December. So kind of a delay in reporting, presumably from the holidays. Statewide in North Dakota, there's a total of 28 ICU beds available, and then just a one pediatric ICU bed available. Next slide. And then this is COVID hospitalizations throughout North Dakota. So overall, hospitalizations are down this week. There's a total of 104 currently admitted. Last week, it was that 141. Seventeen of those are admitted to the ICU, and there are two pediatric cases that are hospitalized. Again, the middle chart shows current hospitalizations due to COVID broken down by age, and then on the right, the bar graph shows cumulative hospitalizations broken down by age. This is the updated graphic from the Stanford healthcare system. So again, continue to see the same trend week after week, it's largely the unvaccinated that are, you know, becoming seriously ill from COVID and being hospitalized. So 43 of the 46 patients that are currently unvaccinated are currently unvaccinated. Next slide. This is the updated breakthrough reports, or breakthrough numbers from the Minnesota Department of Health. I did include a site that had comparison this week from last week's report. So, you know, we continue to see strong protection from severe illness and death among those that are vaccinated, even though we are starting to see an increase in breakthrough infections. So for this week, the cumulative percentage so far for cases that are fully vaccinated is a little over 3.9%, up a little bit from last week when it was at 3.76%. And then, you know, hospitalizations and breakthrough deaths continue to be very, very low. So this week at 0.156% and breakthrough deaths at 0.03%.
All I have, I think Jamie will continue with the vaccine data.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I thought my camera's not working. Can you hear me okay?
We hear you fine, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll look at the statewide vaccine data. It's a 1222 for ages five and up next. And so those that have completed just one dose of the vaccine from five and over is at 71.7% this time. And then those that have completed the series at 67.2%. So over 1.6 million boosters and third doses have also been given so far. And then just looking at the breakdown, you know, we've got 21% of our five to 11-year-olds that have completed the vaccine so far, 57% of the 12 to 15, and then 61% of the 16 and 17-year-olds. So we're seeing those kids become vaccinated as time is going on. And then if we can go to the next slide, please. Looking at the doses administered just by Clay County Public Health to date, 18,618 doses have been administered. This last week, we had just 77 doses that were administered. And we'll go to the next slide. And then I'll point out that last week with the 77 doses, we did have just one clinic for the holidays, and we do have just one clinic again this week. So hopefully, we'll see an increase in response after the holidays. The last week, we had a clinic that had a total of 77 doses. Four of those were first doses, and two were second doses. And then we had 51 that were in that booster category. And then our pediatric doses, the six for the first dose and 15 for second dose. We scheduled our clinic this week for Wednesday. And so tomorrow, the 29th, we'll have our clinic at the family service center again in the ITP room. And that is from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we're offering Pfizer first doses for five to 11, and then Pfizer first and second dose for 12 and up, and then the boosters Pfizer for 16 and up. And that's our plan for this week.
All right.
This is Kathy. I just had Mr. Chair and Commissioner. I received the vault testing site information. I didn't have it earlier. Just got it just a little bit ago. And so I don't have a handout or the slides for that, but the week of December 19th, we had 981 tests that week. So up a bit more from the previous week, which was about 658. And out of the 981 tests, five were positive. So just a 5.05 positivity rate on that week. And as you can see, as you listen to the news, testing has become kind of an issue across the nation. Obviously, there's long lines in some areas and lack of testing sites and kits and et cetera. So it's been kind of an issue with the testing. In our area, we're pretty fortunate that we still have our vault testing site in Morehead, which remain, will remain through the winter and into the spring, as I've been informed. So it's a good place for, again, for people to, they can get the rapid test done there as well as the PCR test. So that's a great resource for people that need ongoing testing. And of course, they have a testing site in Fargo as well for the Cass County residents. So we have opportunities in our area for testing. And the significant long lines is we're seeing people wait hours to get tested across the United States. One other bit of information that just came up is CDC's, they've changed their guidance now as of the 27th. So they're really, as they've studied this Omicron virus, they're making some different recommendations for isolation and quarantine. So the isolation period has been cut in half, basically. It was 10 days previously, and now they're saying five days if you have no symptoms. If you have symptoms, you need to stay home. But five days for isolation if you are asymptomatic. And then you must continue to wear a mask for the additional five days. For the quarantine, that has been changed as well, but that's based on your vaccination status and if you've been boosted or not. So the quarantine, if you've been boosted, if you've had your primary series of vaccines, that's the Pfizer or Moderna within the last six months, the J and J within the last two months, you can wear your mask around others for 10 days. You must, must wear a mask. And then you test on day five is what the new quarantine guidance is. And again, it sounds like a lot of information would not have a slide on this, but we will definitely put this up on our website and have this information out. The other quarantine change was if you, if you're over the six-month period of your Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, or over the two-month period for J and J, and if you're not vaccinated. So those are the three changes with that. You have to stay home for five days of quarantine. And after that, you need to wear a mask around others for five days, and then test on day five. If you can't quarantine, you need to wear a mask for 10 days. So pretty significant changes based on information and studies that they've been doing. So we'll have all that information up on our website. We'll post it on our Facebook page as well, so people understand the changes. And of course, we're always available at our office to answer questions about those.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Hi, Kathy. When you were giving the numbers for tests at the vault site, you said five were positive. That was 5%, right? Not five total people that got tested?
The total number of positives were five.
So, so out of that 981 people that tested, only five people were positive?
Let me just look that up again and make sure I gave you the right information. I have, I'm sorry, I have to pull it up. So yes, so the week of December 19th, 981 were tested. I'm sorry, 51% were positive. I did say five, I think, but it's 51 that were positive out of that 981.
Okay, that makes more sense. And then, thank you for clarifying. And then last question on the changes in the quarantine protocol and isolation, we, our contact tracers are walking families through all of those changes too when they call them, correct?
Yes, once we, and again, this just came out on the 27th, so we haven't even met on this. But yeah, Becky will be, will be following up with all the contact tracers, so people will have the correct information. I haven't seen the recommendations that MDH usually follows suit with those, and I haven't seen that come up from MDH yet. But we'll definitely be following up. All the contact tracers and case investigators will have all of the accurate information that we need to provide to anyone that we're following.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Kathy, Becky, or Jamie? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a request to, for approval to renew contracts with Lakeland Mental Health and Lutheran Social Services for 2022 for the Juvenile Center. Good morning, James.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to request to renew two contracts, one with Lakeland Mental Health, which does our 30-day evaluation. They provide us with a psychiatrist and a psychologist and coordinating those services together. It's primarily done their non-secure program. That's been going on for almost 20 years now. It's a good valuable service. It's, it's needed quite a bit. The other service is with LSS, and they do primarily most of our psychotherapy. That's individualized, group, et cetera. Both contracts, looking for about a 2.2% increase from last year, which I accounted for when I did my proposed budget. Somebody have any questions?
Okay, so do we, do we, are they both identical in terms of their rate increases? Or do we need to have that specified, Steve, in our minutes as to the exact rates? I would think we would need to.
Mr. Chair, yeah, we would, we would want to have the rates included.
I know specifically it's under 3% for sure, but as far as I don't have, I didn't bring last year's numbers with me. I just got notes that it's right around a 2.2 or 2.3% increase.
I, I can possibly, I forgot the rest of my notes, but I did have the Lakeland Mental Health Center meeting yesterday. We did talk about all the different county contracts and services that were going out. The, the rate increases were very minimal in, in terms of what they're asking for folks, but no major spikes anywhere. And the Lakeland Board did support the budget for 2022.
And I could come back at a later date with those exact numbers.
Well, we can probably do this. I'm just wondering if we could, do we have access to that contract?
I could.
I'm trying to avoid coming.
Circle back around and come back in like 15 minutes.
Okay, let's do that.
Wait, just.
Steve, do you have something there?
Just an email. I don't know. It's an email that you sent me.
I just think when we're approving a final contract, we should.
Yeah, I can.
Be specific onto, onto the percentage. It's not that we're debating what it is, it's just that we need to, for the minutes, I think we need to be.
Yeah, my apologies, Mr. Chair and the board. I will get that information, and I'll come right back.
Okay. And, and, and I think you, now that you've done your presentation, maybe even if you can just email it to Steve, you can maybe save yourself a trip.
Okay.
And we can still act on it. Unless there's, are there any other questions right now from the board for James? If not, maybe we'll just wait till a little bit later in our meeting to approve it.
Okay.
Based on those numbers.
Okay.
So you don't need to come back. Just send Steve an email, and we'll get it done.
All right.
All right?
I think, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. All right. Next, we have a request for ARPA funding for CAP LP Senior Transportation Service. We have, Becky is here?
Becky's not here.
Oh, Becky's not here?
No.
Okay.
It's your lucky day.
[laughing].
That's all right. Becky was not able to make it this morning. So I met some of you at the committee meeting.
Yes.
But I'm Robin Christensen, and I work at CAP LP as the senior programs coordinator.
And I'm Lori Schwartz. I'm the executive director for CAP LP.
And so some of this may be redundant. I apologize. But we're here today just to respectfully request funding for our Rural Routes program. For those of you that are unfamiliar, Rural Routes was started a few years ago. It's a rural transportation program targeted towards older adults in rural Clay County. And we started that because of things that we were hearing during our community needs assessments that we do, and focus groups and things like that with older adults especially. So we started that program so that individuals were able to age in place in rural Clay County, but also access amenities that are found more in the Dilworth-Morehead area. We started it about six months before COVID really hit our area, and because of the demographic we were serving and their vulnerability, we had to kind of put that on pause for a little while. And so we're looking for funding to kind of help that grow a little bit. And we're confident that if we're able to ever get back to pre-pandemic conditions, that, you know, we'll be able to demonstrate the program's sustainability while also seeking out other funding opportunities to kind of help that grow. We haven't been able to do it for the last couple of months here. We lost our driver to COVID. So I've gotten a lot of calls from residents and citizens, especially in rural Clay County, wondering when we're going to be able to do it again. I just got another call last week, and so I had to kind of explain to the gentleman, we're working on it. I swear I'm working on it. And just trying to kind of keep this going for those individuals. We understand that they want to live and stay where maybe they grew up or where their families grew up, but that there aren't a lot of options for maybe shopping, pharmacies, clinic visits, that sort of a thing. And so this is just kind of a way that we were able to kind of help with that transition while they can age in place. And then they always thought, you know, well, I'm forced to move into Morehead if I, if I can't stay where I'm at. And so this is just kind of one of those options. The bus we've got is handicap accessible, so if somebody is in a wheelchair, they're able to still access that service. We do charge a fee for service, but it's all sliding fee based on income. We don't require documentation. We take their word for it. They usually know exactly how much money they've got monthly coming in. And so just looking for some support so that we're able to keep this going, but also we'll continue to seek out other funding opportunities as they arise.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. As Robin had stated, they did lose someone very close to their hearts to COVID, and certainly our sympathy. Boy, she was a perfect fit for the demographic and, and really was a great person to really connect folks and, and make them feel as though they, even though they needed, needed help to get into town, it wasn't ever a burden. So our sympathies on that. The ARPA committee has really talked about this and certainly feel that because of the demographics served, but also the interruption that this service faced because of COVID, it certainly falls within the realm of qualifying for those ARPA funds. This board has been pretty vocal about hearing the concerns of rural Clay County, significantly the elderly population in rural Clay County. And I think you said it best to, to allow them to age in place while still accessing services. The position that you had before, I think, acted as a senior navigator, I think, as you talked about. So it's not only coordinating trips into town to do your grocery shopping or hit up Walmart or the Family Service Center, but also to kind of make the most of those trips if they are needing to go speak with someone at the Social Services Department or whatever, we're able to, to do that. So certainly, I wholeheartedly support this. I know the committee had talked a little bit about the, because COVID interrupted your service, it's, it's difficult to apply for grants because it really was interrupted. So you don't have, you know, maybe the data or the usage that you would have if COVID wouldn't have interrupted that. So I think we're hopeful that by approving $50,000 for the van, that you're able to kind of have a benchmark that will allow you to apply for grants in other ways, because this is, this is very, very needed.
Yeah, I thank you for your presentation at our ARPA meeting. This is a helpful tool for our rural transportation needs. It's, it's far from satisfying all of the needs. We've talked about that. And I know that you're certainly willing to collaborate with Rhonda in our social services area to see how this might be able to morph into something more beneficial to even more rural residents.
For sure.
That's, that's certainly my hope. And our ARPA committee strongly recommended that this be approved by the board. I know there was some talk about potentially doing this for even a longer period than one year. At this point in time, we're going to, the recommendation is to do it for this one year. And as Commissioner Mojo said, it allows you to do what you all do well, and that's your grant writing abilities. And as Commissioner Mojo said, it allows you to do what you all do well, and that's your grant writing abilities. But we will, we will certainly keep this in mind beyond that as well, as far as the ARPA group is concerned, because this is really critical to some of our seniors living in our rural areas. So thank you for, you're passionate about that program, obviously, and it's, it's nice to see, so Commissioner Ebbinger.
I just want to jump in, not to belabor it, but this hits home. My wife and I had a conversation at Christmas, we lost her dad this year and my dad several years ago. And it was really funny, we both remembered that both of them said losing their ability to drive was when things started ending for them. And they were both in metropolitan areas, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Dallas, Fort Worth. But there was nothing like this for them, except for assisted living a bus once a week. The rural, needs of our rural older population is even more dramatic. I really appreciate you guys engaging on this and I want you to know you'll have our support as we go forward on, on needs that you can identify and justify, and of course, the grants would be great, but we're, we're here to backstop that, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Kaylee, then Commissioner Gross. I'm going in order, well, how I saw the hands up.
Everybody wants to say their two cents, this is just a fabulous program. I love that it is a direct response to an expressed need from our communities. And helping seniors remain within their support communities, the people that they've known their whole lives is just hugely important. I mean, I've seen that with my grandparents and, and we've seen that with parents and just wanted to say yes, yes, 100% we support this.
Commissioner Gross.
I know 50,000 doesn't run the whole program. Where, what are your other big contributors to this program?
We'll be using other.
Who else is contributing to getting the buses, keep the buses running, keeping employees hired and?
Right, yeah, so the 50,000 is not going to cover the entire cost of the program. So we'll be absorbing that cost as an agency and using other funding such as CSBG funding, our Community Action Grant funding through the state and other donations and sources to kind of help cover whatever is not covered by the, by the cost.
Can you, the acronyms?
Oh, sorry, CSBG is Community Services Block Grant, it's what makes us a Community Action Agency in Moorhead. So it comes from the federal government, yeah. And then there's also state funding for Community Action Agencies that comes from the state, so.
Will they contribute any more to this year or?
So we, we have an allotment from our federal funders, which is the Community Services Block Grant, and a specified allotment from the Community Action Grant, which, which is specific to Minnesota. And those dollars are our only pots of non-discretionary dollars that we can start programs. And for, for example, that's how we started our Workforce Development or Career Connect Program. And what we use those dollars for is to supplement all of the services that we're not fully funded for. So a portion of the dollars go to our housing programs. A portion of the dollars have always went to Clay seniors. And, and our Career Connect, that's our Workforce Development Program. So it's, it's our only funding that we have that we can fill in the gaps when we're not fully funded. So we don't have enough to cover, you know, the full program, the full service, it's kind of just to fill in the, to fill in the gaps. And we, the, the amount that we get is the same each year from our, from the Community Services Block Grant and the Community Action Grant that's specific to Minnesota.
And I think just to follow up, the initial startup came from a grant that had been written for and that organization typically only funds startup projects. So the major startup, the purchase of the van, which is very nice by the way, came from that grant. There is an inability to go back to them because it was, you know, they typically only do the startups. And that is kind of where the problem is, because there wasn't a, a full term of service without the interruption, it's difficult to apply for additional grants that may be out there.
Thank you.
Alright, what's, yes, yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve $50,000 from ARPA funds to cover the request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, first, second was by Commissioner Kaylee. The third, second was by Commissioner Ebbinger. With the second, second. Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carried. So I just want to point out maybe for both Robin and Lori that now that we've done this and it's, according to this, it's, the timeline is January 1 and there are auditing requirements that you, you need to be aware of. So you'll need, because it is going to be the responsibility to, to track those dollars pretty much exactly where they go. I know that we're, anytime that we give funds to outside agencies like that, we're going to have to make sure to start letting you know that. So, so just make sure that it, within your system, all those funds are tracked.
Right.
And then I, I think, I don't know if there's a follow-up that Lori Johnson will have to do with you in the event that we go through our ARPA audits.
Okay.
So just be aware of that.
Brenda will just be excited that she can create another paragraph.
Alright, well, good, you're, you're set to go and.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it.
Get that program rolling, alright. Okay, next we have a public hearing. We are, okay, we're good on time. Public hearing to consider granting property tax abatements and that is item H. Seems like it's a little bit larger than normal.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Alright.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebbinger, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carried, and I understand that Lori is here and online with us and when we're done with this, I just want to point out that we'll take that addition, or that consent item.
And Mr. Chair, I also have the information from James also.
Okay, very good, alright, so we'll stick to the public hearing information for now and.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, before you this morning, for your consideration is Resolution 2021-58. In October of 2020, the Clay County Board of Commissioners approved the continuation of the Residential Tax Abatement Program through Resolution 2020-30 for fiscal years 21 and 22. The resolution before you this morning lists the eligible properties for abatement. As you're aware, Clay County and additional government entities also have the ability to offer tax abatement in their communities and some of those have valuation limits. And just from a, for a background standpoint, the city of Moorhead, Dilworth, and Barnesville are participating and they have no, no limit in the valuation of the tax exemption. Yulin also is participating this, this year for the first time. Glendon is, has a limit of 200,000 on the, the first 200,000 and Holly is also participating on their first 400,000. And so, and I would also note, in addition to these, these cities, the following school districts also are participating, Barnesville, Holly, and Moorhead. So if, just from a historical standpoint, in the past, it's important to note that we've had different cities come in, come forward and talk about the impacts, that they believe that this has been integral in, in the community developments over the last years, this is a, a two-year project, but we've been doing this since 2012 with our governmental agencies. And so as part of your resolution today, the, the board approves on the odd years, the qualifying parcels. Some of these parcels listed are on their first year, some of them are on their second year. And just of note, we'll be back probably sometime this October, coming October in 2022 to get your, what your wishes are for the 2023 and 2024 abatement. With that, I would yield for any questions, Lori, did I miss anything?
Nope, you got it all covered.
I think for our, our newer board members, this, you know, this really has been a, a real positive in terms of attracting people to build within our Clay County communities. The hardest hit that we took, I think, in terms of the actual budget would have been the first year we did it. The first and the second year that we did it. Now, you know, when you consider the 417,817 that's there, that last year's number would have been, we don't have the exact number here, but at least it's, it stays somewhat consistent now from year to year, wouldn't you say?
That would be correct, yes.
Just have a clarifying question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, on Resolution 2021-58, it identifies Moorhead, Dilworth, Barnesville, Glendon, and Holly. You did say Yulin was taking part in it, but it's not included.
That I believe is correct, in talking with Ms. Johnson yesterday, she indicated that Yulin was participating this year, is that correct, Lori?
Yeah, they are participating, but so far they don't have any parcels that, none of their parcels qualify for next year yet.
Thank you.
So that's why they're not listed in the resolution?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, what's the board's wishes? Oh, we have to, any other, we have a public hearing here, so do we have any other comments for the public hearing? Any other comments? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebbinger, any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-58 and the estimated total of 417,817.
Second.
By Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carried. Lori, while we have you on there, we had removed detachment C, which was the year in transfer, just for, from consent, just for clarification. And my question was, was why, why was that showing as a deficit?
These are actually old expenditures, we did a temporary transfer at the end of last year anticipating, you know, that we would be moving forward, but we haven't spent anything significant out of there since May of 2020. So I don't want to keep doing temporary transfers back and forth when we're not actually actively using the fund.
Okay, so these were, were these CARES funds?
No, in.
No.
Go ahead, Lori.
Go ahead, Steve.
In, in reviewing some of the information that Lori shared since, since this was pulled, this goes back to our master planning. One for this, paying for the service through Glenn McCarthy when we did the original, original master plan prior to CARES. And then another portion of it is about $10,000 for funding that was utilized at the Government Center. And if you recall, we utilized, utilized our revenues reserves, we didn't use, we used CARES to purchase it. We used, the board agreed to utilize the revenues over expenditures to pay for, pay for the renovation portion.
Okay, I'm a little confused because in this description, it says the courthouse and courtroom remodeling project fund needs. So what's that got to do with the Government Center?
Lori?
Well, that's just the name of the fund, we named the fund many years ago. So that's just the name of the fund.
Alright. Okay. What's the board's wishes? The request is to do a year in transfer.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, the same, motion carried, thank you, Lori, and then was there something else that we had?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I did receive information from Mr. O'Donnell in regards to the contract percentages.
Oh, okay.
The, the Lakeland contract would be a 2.27% increase and the LSS contract would be a 2.33% increase.
Lakeland is 2.?
2.7.
2.7. And the LSS is 2.33.
Alright.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Lakeland contract.
At 2.27?
Yep.
Alright.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebbinger, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carried, Commissioner Ebbinger.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Lutheran Social Services contract at 2.33%.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion carried. And I, you know, the reason kind of why I wanted specifics here is sometimes when we, as being on the audit committee for quite some time, we have a state audit and they go back and review minutes and it, we really want it to reflect accurate numbers, so thank you for, for that. Alright, 910 item here, we have Highway Department requests, there's Dave and Justin.
Since it's the last board meeting of the year, I'd break out my green mask.
There you go.
Which team is it that's going to first?
He's got a Clay County kid that plays for that team, so that's awesome.
Not this team, by the way.
I can't see it.
Alright, Dave, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Alright, item A, approval of sign order.
Yes, this is our annual sign order, we would like to continue on with the Blue Fire Number replacements, last year was year one. The guys actually did what we had expected to do and a little extra, they, they found that it, they were efficient in what they did. We kind of, we kind of quadranted the company up, is that correct? And then we have, we have them all on inventory, so we can query them and go out and make replacements and also make the updates to our sign program. What we would like to do is purchase 23,530.78 worth of signs from M&amp;R, continue our year two and move forward on replacing these.
Make a motion to approve the request for sign replacement.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carried, next we have approval to purchase retro reflector, reflectometer.
Retro reflectometer. So this was a new request in our 2022 budget. So we borrowed one from Cass County last year because we were initially going to replace stop signs and that was going to be a three-year program. And we'd kind of been blanketly replacing them two or three years after the warranty went out. And we didn't really know if the sign was good or bad, so we borrowed the reflectometer and found out the stop signs we were going to replace still fell within federal guidelines and were still good. So we want to purchase our own retro reflectometer and the one that we found automatically gives you a pass fail as soon as you shoot the sign and then it also takes a picture and then it is incorporated within our simple signs, which is a computer program that has an inventory of all of our signs. And then by doing that, it kind of, you have a sample group that you shoot and that basically makes sure, ensures that you're well within federal guidelines for all of your signs.
Just a comment, the 9,999 seems like you gave them a $10,000 budget and they gave, it just is odd that it's.
And there was a, there was a poll, you know, because sometimes the signs are fairly high and if it is in the wintertime rather than climbing up, so yeah, they, they added a piece of equipment.
That's fine, it makes, it makes sense.
Okay, Commissioner Kaylee.
Out of curiosity, how much does a stop sign cost?
So total installation, like, let's say a township has this, go out and put one on, it's somewhere between 150 and 200 dollars. So they're not, they're not super expensive, that's, you know, it's, the, the actual post itself. So they're not, they're not super expensive. That's, you know, it's, the, the actual post itself, being the price of steel is high, costs more than the aluminum sign itself. So they're, they're not, they're not super expensive, but you could have a couple hundred bucks into it by the time the sign, the sign truck and the guy goes out and puts it up.
So if we, I'm just thinking, if we save money on replacing these signs, this thing pays for itself in a few years, probably?
So I, I mean, we were going to start a, was it a two-year or a three-year program on just replacing stop signs? And beans that we found out the signs were still good, then we shifted to the Blue Fire Numbers, which we didn't know when we were going to fit that into our budget.
I think they've got like a 13-year warranty on them, and we've been going a few years after, like Justin had said. And I, I think what we're finding is some of the signs will last much longer than that. Some of them facing a certain direction may not. And that, that way we can test them anytime during the year. We don't have to run over and borrow one. You know, if something were to happen to the one that we borrowed, then we'd have to buy that one and not have it. And so I guess we'd like the opportunity to test signs whenever we want. You know, another thing that we did in lieu of this is you can also do a night survey. That's kind of a good option to do in the, just a test with a piece of equipment. You'd test it at night, and it's funny, when the signs are wore out, I don't know if anyone's ever noticed, but they're just black. During the daytime, you'll see a sign, it'll look perfect, but at night it'll just have no reflectivity left. So we've done before where we've assembled multiple groups of our maintenance staff and went out at night and did. And though, you know, that's kind of costly too, when you have all that extra time and the guys out doing a night survey for signs, so.
Are they addressing signs similar in terms of the life of their reflectability?
Correct, yep. They're all, it's a sheeting, so it's all the same sheeting.
Okay.
And you can buy different kinds. Years ago, it used to be engineer-grade sheeting, which was not very good, and now I think we use, is it a DG3? I think it's a much, it's a much better, some signs, if you notice, they just jump right out at you. And I think there's even another level of sign reflectivity that's even more expensive that, I'm assuming it's on the state highways. But we just, we use our, our minimum or the next step up of sign.
Should you check them, do you check the house numbers at the same time you check signs when you're out in those areas then?
Certainly could, yep. Those are, those are like pushing about 22, 23 years old, some of those.
Well, that can be pretty important too, if somebody's trying to find a, an address at night.
Yep, absolutely. I would think we definitely would, since that's kind of our, you know, if that could delay years of doing that too, yeah.
One thing we've kind of talked about too is when the student workers get slower, there's not a construction project going on. And we could have a student worker take the retro reflectometer out and really start to build the inventory.
That can help you plan too.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
What's the board's wishes?
I move to approve the purchase of the retro reflectometer.
Second.
You said it better than I did.
Have a question.
Okay.
I was the second, yep.
You were the second?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioners Abinger and second by Commissioner Kaylee. All right, Commissioner Mojo.
You commented that it's in your 2022 budget, so you won't purchase this until, even though we are approving it today, you won't approve it till?
Yeah, it would be a 22 expenditure.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Item number C, approval of auto-state travel to attend National County Engineer Conference. That's attachment.
Hey. The last two years of conference has been canceled, and we did get permission to go. The last one that we actually got permission and, and we're moving forward on was 2020. Airline tickets were purchased, and I was able to continue with those vouchers. They are going to run out in the end of March. I called the other day, and they would extend those to, could be used for this conference if given approval. I think there's about $750 worth of credit there, and it would cost an additional $50 to go to this venue. So the cost of flying is only an additional $50 on top of those vouchers. I guess I see a lot of value in attending this conference. It's very well attended by the Minnesota County Engineer Association. There's a lot of good state, local, federal, technical breakout sessions. It is one of the more valuable conferences that I've ever been to. And I guess I would like to attend for myself and for Justin. It would be middle of April. It would be from the 24th to the 27th. And like I said, I, I see a lot of value in this. I've, I've attended a few of them in the past, and if I didn't think it was of value, I certainly wouldn't ask for approval to go.
Oppose to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Steve, at the beginning of the pandemic, I know we had some discussion about out-of-state travel and employees. And not that, I'm not supporting this. I want to make sure that we didn't set a policy that we haven't returned back to.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, thank you. You did, as a board, revert back to department head approval for, for going out of town.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have approval of engineering service contract with, was it Woodseth?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is a professional services agreement with, with Seth. It's the asbestos and regulated waste report for three bridges. So whenever we take a bridge out or replace a bridge, this is one of the required reports by Mendat. So one structure is in the south part of the county on County Road 51. And then there's a township structure in Elkton, which the cost of that will be completely reimbursed by Mendat. And then the third structure is the Broadway Bridge, since we are planning for removal this coming summer. This will be a required report to move forward with construction. And then it is $4,600. $900 will be billed to the City of Fargo. And then $1,400 will be reimbursed by the Township Bridge Fund. And then we did just.
So the 4,600 is all, all three?
Both contracts combined, yep. And I did just split out the contract for the Broadway Bridge, so it was easier to see. That's the $1,800 one.
All right. Any questions?
Move to approve this request.
All right.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion?
Another question.
Okay, Commissioner Mojo.
Has this board acted on the removal of the North Broadway Bridge? We have.
It was under our deficient bridge list, which we approved. Was it the 14th, I believe, of December?
Good, that was just.
We have not taken formal action to remove it yet, though.
No, just the, listed on our deficient bridge for removal.
Is that something, you know, I, I don't follow the City of Fargo's super close. Have they taken action on removing the bridge?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Let's just make sure that we're in step with.
Absolutely. Justin did share this proposal with them, just to see if, you know, we did get a couple of quotes on it, and we went for the cheaper one, the one that we have had experience with this company. But we want to make sure that they didn't have different procedures or maybe a contractor in mind and.
Or a different requirement, since this is a requirement by Mendat.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, so we got everything done. Committee reports. Commissioner Abinger, would you like to start today?
Had a good Christmas holiday, and none of my committees met, so that completes my report.
All right, Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 21st, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. We did not have a quorum for that meeting, but we did still share agency reports from everyone that was gathered and have an informal conversation about what was going on. One of the questions I asked at that meeting was what are agencies and social services, what are their clients struggling to access in the area? And overwhelmingly, I heard neuropsych evaluations were very hard to come by, and that sometimes people are waiting six months currently for those, so that's troubling.
So just to follow up on that, the access times at Lakeland right now for those neuropsych appointments are about 24 days. The problem is that oftentimes you have to have a referral from a provider for that, so the public can hear that.
Yep, thanks. And, you know, like I said, there was scant attendance at that meeting. So that meeting is best when we have lots of different mental health agencies and social services and different groups there, so we get a better picture. And because then we can see, it's easier to get in at this agency or another, and then we could refer clients in different places. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
Report.
Report, all right. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I do have two weeks of reports to give. Two weeks ago, I attended the Regional Joint Waters Board meeting with the Red River Basin Commission. We did have great presence from our state and national representatives to hear the, the water plans that they have, that the joint, the water basin has, so that they can advocate for funding on those, those higher levels. So I appreciate the presence there. I attended the Prairie Lake Solid Waste Committee meeting that I heard Commissioner Campbell give the report on that last week, and met with the MetroCog Policy Board, did discuss year-end contract obligations, and had an update from different studies that are going on. Last week, I attended the ARPA Committee where we discussed the request that was before us from Lakes and Prairies today. Thank you for your support of that. And also discussed the OSHA requirement that this board took action on, the mandate that we need to take action on locally. So I appreciate the cooperation from our staff on, on those requests. You know, I, I think it is important that this board, this isn't an ARPA Committee report, but I think this board should because of the mandate that will happen for unvaccinated that choose to continue testing, that will need to be masked. I think it's important that this board revisit our requirement that we set in October in terms of masking in all county buildings. I think part of the initiative for this board has always been to continue to allow staff and citizens to be as safe as possible while conducting county business. I know that our ARPA Committee continues to address needs that are brought forward by public, our departments in terms of how we can streamline efforts to keep citizens safe. I am encouraged by the continued updates from our Public Health. It showed that it seems as though we have hit a peak of that last wave. And I know that part of our desire to have those mask mandates was because of hospital capacity. And when we were addressing that, had zero or one or two staffed beds. It's promising to see that there were 11 beds at a hospital available in ICU. And so I, I would hope that this board would maybe re-entertain the mask mandate piece. I'm certainly open for any conversation on that, but I think it's important that we continue to address policies, certainly as we go into the new year. Does anyone have anything on that?
Well, I, I agree with you. We, we need to look at it again, and I do know that it's not going to be our choice moving forward in some instances of mask wearing. It's going to be, because we're part of Minnesota's OSHA, it's going to be a requirement for those in the workplace who are not vaccinated. It's not, it's not this board's decision. It's come down from us, from the state and the federal government. So, you know, there, that can be part of the conversation moving forward, whether, whether others who meet all the requirements will still need to, to wear them entering and exiting. We can, I think that's an appropriate conversation to have. So that's my comments for that. Commissioner Abinger.
I just want to reiterate what you just covered, Commissioner Campbell. A lot of this is not in our control. I think the mask issue needs to be discussed. It's also going to need to be discussed in light of federal regulations and state regulations that are currently kind of up in the air waiting for a court ruling. We have to prepare for immunizations and masking and policies that'll be dictated to us from, from above. But we also have to be receptive to input on things we can do, but that's a pretty muddy field or muddy, muddy vision right now. We've got to get some answers.
And maybe I can clarify it. I think, so the, what we do know is that we've asked employees to provide their vaccination status. We need to know those things by January 6th. We need to come up with a policy, and I think I've maybe preached to the choir over and over that we need to have a policy. Those folks that don't want to get vaccinated choose to have the opportunity to be tested. But because of that, we'll need to wear masks at all times within the county buildings. Our recommendation from Public Health has been, as long as we can retain a six-feet barrier distance, like we are right now, we don't need to wear masks. And we, you can if you choose to. I think that's the important part to, to say. And so what we've required is, is kind of a muddy policy going forward from my perspective. I've been here for Planning Commission meetings where there is a requirement to wear masks, and citizens choose to or choose not to. And, and the problem is who's enforcing this? We just, I mean, who is the enforcing agency? I am prepared today to make a motion to, as of Friday, which is, you know, the, would be the end of the year, cease the mandate that we have set forward as a board to wear masks. Certainly, we can encourage folks to, to do whatever they choose. I had ill children last week and did my quarantine period. I think people need to start taking accountability and knowing that we are moving into a time where we're going to have to live with the pandemic, this endemic that we've, we've heard. I think that it's, it's hard for me to see this board set a precedent and not revisit it, so that's why I think it's important that we revisit it.
So was that a motion? Or are you?
Well, I, I think this board should have discussion on it, but I will.
Okay, well.
If you want me to do it now, I will.
Well, I guess. I, I guess I'd like to try, let's incorporate that into what data, when we finally, when we get the full data of all of our employees, and that's, we're going to, we're supposed to have that by the 4th, I think, was that, was that the?
The 3rd, Mr. Chair.
3rd of January, so the, our meeting on the 4th, I think this would be an appropriate conversation.
Right. I, you know, I think from my perspective, as we have a significant amount of data, we know it's, it's always kind of been this muddied area. So with that, I will maybe just make a motion to, as of Friday, which would be the end of the week, have us dissolve our requirement to wear masks in county buildings. Certainly, that negates what would happen federally going after that, but that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second that motion on the fact that by January 3rd, 4th, we're going to have it anyway, so. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Kaylee.
In Kathy's presentation today, I had her clarify what the positivity rate was for our testing at the vault site. And it was over 50%. The previous week, the positivity rate that was reported was 10.24%. That's a significant increase, and I just feel like I'm not ready to support that. I totally hear what you're saying about it's, it's a muddy policy. But I'm worried about what the data's going to look like once it catches up for the holiday. And that, that boom in the positivity rate, I find very concerning, so I will not be supporting this motion today.
Any other discussion? I guess, I, I'm, right now, I'm confused in these numbers. I'm confused what was just brought up by Commissioner Kaylee in terms of the numbers, because the number said that there was 900 and some tested and 51% was positive. That would mean over 400. That would mean over 450 positive cases.
Exactly.
But the problem is, is our reports show 300 and some, and I know, there's this.
There's some Fargo, you know, some.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So my only comment on that, when we set our policy, why did we do that? Did we set our policy, from what I remember hearing from Public Health, was to help out our hospitals, to give our hospitals breathing room? We're seeing that. We're seeing that statewide. We're seeing, all of the cases in North Dakota and Minnesota are dropping. You know, I just, I really feel like there's an avenue that we as a board have to comply with, which we are, which is finding vaccination statuses of our employees. If they're not vaccinated, we find a avenue to make sure and mitigate that, which we are, because we have to. And so it's my feeling that, that because of the actions that we've taken to keep folks safe, we've had opportunities for vaccination, and now we're finding out how to mitigate staff, it seems to me that a requirement, as we're seeing with all of the schools, it's, it would be a, a safe time to scale that back.
Oh, Kathy is on. Kathy, did you have comments?
I think we just lost her.
Kathy? Did we lose Kathy? I'm assuming, did you get her on, or did she, was she watching?
She was, she was watching, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So she was going to try to jump on to ask any questions.
All right, well, let's give her that opportunity here. And I, I guess while we're waiting for Kathy, everything that Commissioner Mojo said, I, I don't, I certainly don't disagree with. I'm, I'm, where, where my concern lies is in moving for, and I, and I understand even the public school systems have, are going to be changing their masking policies the first of the year. I guess I was hopeful that this board could come up with and adopt a policy moving forward that is a required policy from the federal government, OSHA. And that, and that, so there is going to be a mask requirement in all of our facilities for those not vaccinated. That, that's going, that's not our choice, that's going to be the choice, or that's going to be the rules set before us. I guess I, you know, I would have, I would prefer us to, to deal with this when we have a better idea of those numbers. And I, I know, Darren, do you want to, do you have a microphone there?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let you know that I did run the numbers this morning, and we have 259 that have responded with their, their card, that responded to the form. 247 of those are fully vaccinated, nine are not vaccinated, and three are partially vaccinated. So those are the people that have responded to our, our form already.
All right, so we do, so far, we've had a high rate of.
Correct.
Already vaccinated.
Darren, what is the total number of employees, employees that need to report?
We have about 625, and that would include all the variable hours. I'm thinking that the variable hours, we're probably have to check with the department heads to make sure they're getting the, the message in the email that they have to also fill that out. If they're not working, like I know we hire some variable hours and then they don't work for a while, I don't think there's a requirement for them to test weekly if they're not working, but we have a total of about 625 employees with everybody included.
Well, just under half have reported.
Yep, we're a little under half.
Okay, can we, I see that Kathy is now connected with us. Good morning again, Kathy.
Sorry about that, I was having some.
You've been listening, and there's been a motion to end our, our masking policy within our campus.
And, and, yeah, and let me just clarify something because what I said at the board meeting, I did call the Vault testing site because I wasn't sure that the number they had was accurate. They had a combination of, someone else was doing the, the numbers, they didn't have all the data in, but they had information from all the Vault testing sites across the state. So they did clarify with, with me, so I can give you that clarification, and maybe that helps, that it actually, let me just, I'm sorry, let me just quickly, I need to quickly pull that up again, I just lost it. The positivity rate for Morehead is different than what I reported this morning. So after clarification with the state, so I'll give you the correct information now. So the Morehead, and this, and this might help in the conversation, the testing site for the week of December 19th was actually 5.05% positivity rate. So there was a misprint on that, so it is actually 5%. So that might, that might make a difference. I wanted to log, log back in to let you know that information that I just received. And also, we, we discussed in detail all of the information that we've been working with along the way. You know, we've been providing a lot of data, same information as, as we go along. We know that the, the Omicron is circulating, you know, wide and far now, that's a very predominant variant strain, seems to be very infectious, but not causing increased illness in individuals. So that so far has been the case that, you know, and obviously, the people that are vaccinated, they may, you know, they may experience Omicron. It's, there's breakthrough cases that are continuing to happen, but those vaccinated and with boosters are, are really not experiencing severe illness. So we're, we're seeing the, you know, not the huge numbers of hospitalizations based on that. There's certainly unvaccinated children, there's still, you know, five and under can't get vaccinated, those that are the, up to the five to 17-year-olds, you know, there, we're still in the progress of getting those individuals vaccinated. So more and more kids are getting vaccinated. We did talk about this internally in Public Health, and OSHA will certainly come out with their requirements for the unvaccinated to wear masks. We're pretty confident that's going to happen. I think at this point, I mean, we're not, we're not seeing an end to the Omicron virus circulating. It's going to be ongoing for quite some time. We're going to continue to push people to get their boosters. That's going to be a very important measure. But I would say, you know, we, we can certainly, I would not be opposed to a recommendation for masks, not a mandate for everyone. I think all the unvaccinated, it will become a mandate for unvaccinated folks to wear masks. There are certain exceptions if that is the case, and if this board chooses to do that. We do provide some face-to-face home visits, and in working with social services, they provide visits as well. We'll still make, we'll, we'll still have our clients mask when they're meeting face-to-face with our nurses, and our nurses will mask as well in those situations because they'll be longer than 15 minutes, most likely closer than six feet. Social services will have the same. So there will be some exceptions that departments will make. We also will require masks when people are coming in for vaccinations. So individuals that are getting vaccinated, and my staff will be wearing masks, and we also will require masks if we come down to when we, you know, start doing testing or requiring testing of employees. Of course, we'll require masking. So there will be some exceptions to that as well. But I don't know if that helps in, in clarification of the masking.
Kathy, thank you for, for that information. I have, I have a few questions based on what you've just said. And so all of our county employees who, who do, for example, home visits, whether it's child protection or whatever, are those, are those guidelines set by DHS, or does the, for example, for a while, there, there were no home visits done at all. It was all done, does, does the county have the ability from that standpoint to direct departments to, to not do the home visits where possible and to keep those? And again, because you're talking about some areas, even in the, in the area of daycare or whatever, like you said, there's, they're going into places where there's children under five years old who, who cannot be vaccinated. Do we have that ability as, at the county level to supersede what Department of Health might say?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We, we do follow what the requirements are, for example, our home visits. We are cautioned to do our home visits as we previously had, but in some circumstances, we do need to see the families face-to-face. There are exceptions, as long as, and, and we verify if people are vaccinated, but we still wear masks and require, of course, the people that can wear masks, young children can't, but, and that is set by our Minnesota Department of Health. Our WIC program, as I have talked about in the past, is still doing, the majority of WIC is on the phone and virtual, and that is directed by the WIC State Program. So there are some areas that the board, that we would follow the guidance of the state and federal government that are in charge of the, you know, the programs, and some of those are the home visiting program, the WIC program, and then social services. If there's some requirements that they need to follow by DHS and MDH, yes, those would, those would be the priorities that we have to follow. So, you know, those would be the exceptions, is what I was kind of mentioning, is we would follow what those requirements are. And, and the Minnesota Department of Health for our home visiting program, for instance, is giving us the leeway of, if at all possible, as long as we're in high transmission, try not to do our home visits as we have in the past where everyone is seen face-to-face. So those, yes, that's guidance by the state and the feds.
Thank you. So a little while ago, you were describing the Omicron, and, and in most, in most cases where there's, the people are vaccinated, it doesn't seem to be as severe as what previous versions of the, and unvaccinated. Would you, would you say that that would be a description of endemic versus pandemic?
Well, you know, we'll eventually get to the endemic. They're still considering this a pandemic because of the, you know, we're still seeing huge numbers of, of spread, so they're not, they're not changing that to an endemic at this point. It eventually will be, just like, you know, basically influenza, every year we'll see this, some type of coronavirus every year as well. But currently, they're still considering this a pandemic, so that's kind of where we're at right now. But eventually, it will become a endemic. Once we get a handle on this, you know, this, this new variant strain is, you know, fairly new, obviously, but really, you know, the transmission is, is really quite high, but the cases are tending to be more, they're not seeing the severe illness, especially with the vaccinated. We still have to worry about the unvaccinated, but we're not seeing the severe illness, hospitalizations, deaths from this virus more significantly than, than Delta was. So, so that's the, that's the positive at this point, that this Omicron is, is not more severe.
And Kathy, the CDC's recommended guidance for masking and those types of policies are based on, I mean, it, it can, it can be different based on different communities and where they're, where they're at with levels of spreading percentages and that type of thing. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Doesn't, doesn't the CDC, doesn't the CDC talk about there might be areas of the country that might be in a more significant situation where more extreme measures have to be taken?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that's, that's correct. Minnesota is still in the high transmission level. We're still seeing lots of transmission, and the more people that get vaccinated, you know, the better we'll get a handle on this, but it's, it's transmitting pretty, pretty rapidly. So, you know, we're, we're still considered in the high transmission. They haven't lowered that level for all across the state of Minnesota, but there, you know, there are various states. I haven't looked at the whole map of the United States, so I'm not sure what areas have leveled off from the high transmission level. So that one is still present, but.
But you could have the metro area, the Minneapolis, Saint Paul area, having a, a completely different infection rate than you might have in a, in a rural community.
Yeah, that's correct. And, and you know, there's a lot of people, I'll just, I'll just say, when people are getting the, you know, we, we talk about the testing sites where we have accurate data or, or testing at the pharmacies or clinics, but many people are getting home tests or over-the-counter tests. So we don't know exactly the, the whole picture, that, you know, people may or may not be reporting those tests that they do at home. So, you know, there's, there's not the huge accuracy. There's a lot of people getting, you know, the test kits that you can buy over the counter. We're in short supply even around here. So there's, there's a large number of people that are getting tested that it's may or may not being recorded, but I, I think we're, we're, we're still in this for the long haul. Let's, let's just say that. I think it's prudent to still do the things that we do as far as, you know, you know, we, we don't, we want to be very careful about people with symptoms and, and following the guidance about isolation and quarantine. I think we still continue to push the vaccines. So when I'm saying we're in for the long haul, we are. But again, you know, I, it doesn't mean that, you know, we can, there's no, there's no, no one managing or monitoring, you know, masks in all of our, we just, there's no manpower, there's no ability to do that, monitoring who's wearing masks and who's not. So that's kind of an impossibility, and when we talk about, you know, how are we managing, you know, monitoring the people that are masking or not in our buildings, it's really pretty hard to do that, other than department heads paying attention and noticing their employees. People that are coming in are, you know, are masking, and we, I would say we'd still want to definitely recommend any of the visitors coming in to mask. We don't want to minimize the effectiveness of masks along with all the other measures, but I'm comfortable at the point we're at, and in talking with my team, that recommendations could be made for masking. We, we're still not minimizing that, you know, masks are, are still a good measure of protecting, especially those that aren't vaccinated, but for breakthrough cases. So I'm comfortable with that recommendation versus the mandate.
All right.
That, that's just my opinion, and based on lots of conversations I've had with MDH and my, my team in Public Health.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you, Kathy. Commissioner Kaylee.
Kathy, thank you so much for contacting Vault and getting us the accurate information, and 5.05% is very different than 50%. So I just wanted to clarify something on the motion. Was the motion just to dissolve the policy, and that's the end of it, or was it to? to dissolve the policy and move to a strong recommendation for masking?
My motion is to dissolve the policy. I think that public health has continued to recommend. CDC is recommending, state, MDH is recommending.
I, I, I do like the idea of, of, you know, if there's a, I, I asked for this to even be a topic a little bit earlier, but we didn't have all of our commissioners here because I felt it was, it needed to have this discussion. And I'm glad we're having this discussion. And I, I would support this motion if, if there was a clarification to still strongly recommend. And again, it would be strongly recommended based on the CDC's guidelines. I, you know, I.
And I don't know if this board has ever not strongly recommended that.
Well, we've, we've.
That's, that's my point is I, you know, I, I really struggle with that. That's on the, I mean, it's on everything, every business that we all go into. So I'm not saying that, that I'm not strongly recommending precautions be in place. I just think that the first step is changing a policy that we had in October.
Well, the policy prior to October was that we did strongly recommend based on public health and CDC's recommendation.
No, I, I think we're, I don't think we're, I think we're arguing over the same thing. I am just saying that I'm trying to create a motion right now that's reversing our October, October action. So it would be no different than what my question was in regards to our engineering out-of-state travel. We, the first step is that we have to change that piece, and it would go back to our prior recommendation as you're talking about.
Okay. So is, is, if, if, if that's the understanding that this motion would go from a mandatory mask-wearing within our facilities unless you're at, at your own workstation or whatever, that it would, that it would go back to what was previously known as a highly recommended to wear mask? Is that, is that correct? Is that, is that my reading that?
Right.
Okay. All right. So then it's, that's clarified to me then. All right, Commissioner Kaylee.
And then I just wanted to talk about if this were to pass, what the signage would then look like on our buildings. Will we go back to the previous signs that we had? I don't remember what they said.
Yes, Steve, you want to?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and Kathy can jump in here. Also, I believe the verbiage that we had addressed that, that masks were highly recommended, and it addressed, it also addressed, Kathy, what was the verbiage if we didn't, if you weren't vaccinated, that, that we would prefer that you wore the mask or the mask required if you were not, which is, which will, to your, to your point, Mr. Chair, moving forward and what we know about the OSHA mandates and Minnesota OSHA mandates is that will be, that would be consistent with, with what we know with OSHA.
All right. Commissioner Ebbinger.
And my only concern is we're about to have some mandates put on us first of the year. I understand retreating from a policy is different than establishing new policy, but it just seems like we're doing this piecemeal. And there's some unknowns out there that are going to come with both a court ruling that you're looking so far as vaccines go and what specifically OSHA wants. And it just seems timely to wait another two weeks, maybe, before we know what requirements are going to be placed on us by state and federal government, before we start changing what we're doing now. Maybe I'm missing something, but that's my concern.
I, I see that, you know, I see these, this fourth wave, and I see this fourth wave now doing exactly what the other waves did as it's coming down. Based on the numbers that we saw today, the hospitalizations are down. I think that goes to Commissioner's point where that was the original deal was, was we were going to do these things based on the hospital capacities. Hospital capacities are down. I still, you know, I mean, I would still encourage people that, those especially who are not vaccinated, wear masks. But I also want to point out that with this mask mandate, I have been out and I have seen where multiple county employees might be at an outside event, outside of this facility, and they're not wearing masks. It, it happens. And so, so we're asking them to do it within our building, but then these county employees, and, and they rightfully so, they, they have the right to go where they want and do what they want and mask if they want wherever they go outside of our facility. But it just seems strange to me that, that we're requiring it from them inside this building, and then they might all decide they're going to go to a birthday party or some other event, which they do do. And most of them elect to not wear masks. So I am going to support this motion today. I'm going to support it from the standpoint that it is reverting back to, we're still highly recommending those not vaccinated. And I hope that this board does not wait till February 9th, which is the, I think is the deadline for adopting a policy. I hope we don't wait that long to do that. If this thing is supposed to be implemented, and I'm talking about the OSHA rules, on January 10th or 11th?
January, January 10th, we're supposed to have our vaccination statuses.
Yeah, we're supposed to have our statuses and then a policy in place a month later. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I hope we don't take a month later to adopt that policy. We're going to know those guidelines, and we need to adopt it then. And that will address ultimately the safety issues regarding masking within our facility. In the meantime, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. We're at a 5.05% positive rate, and that is, to me, that is down considerably compared to what it's been. And that's what we've been asking for, and this is to see a downward trend. And I know Kathy said that there might be a slight lag in some of the information, but I am going to support the motion today. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, if I could just briefly to Commissioner Kaylee's question, one other thing just taken in consideration depending on the board's action, the court, because of district court being here, the state Supreme Court Justice sets the guidelines on masking for, for the courts portion. And so they would, masks would need to be, continue to be worn for, for the court, court.
I had comments on that.
Okay.
All right. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Steve, honor roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I just, I just want it noted that every commissioner here still understands the concerns and the needs and, and what needs to be done. And there, there needs to be some personal responsibility that goes on in this process. And let's hope we don't have to reinstate it moving forward. So effective then, January 1, these facilities outside of the courts where it's dictated by the courts, we will have a change in masking policy.
Thank you for entertaining that. I appreciate it.
All right, you can continue.
Then yesterday, I did attend the Lakeland Mental Health Committee meeting.
Kathy, thank you for coming back on. If you want to, I don't think you need to stay on any longer, but thank you.
Thank you. We did have discussion at the Lakeland Mental Health meeting yesterday about the expansion of the Moorhead Clinic. There has been an architect secured and working on plans for that as the needs continue to arise, similar to the comments from Commissioner Kaylee. We also talked about those key performance indicators and project, program margins. Things continue to look positive there. They're working on this, how to implement the OSHA guideline or OSHA requirements, and talked about the 2021 annual meeting. I know many of our commissioners have attended that in the past. We will be moving that from February, what it normally is held, until April. Part of the reason is we typically don't have our final audit ready, and I think it's important to have that for other commissioners that are there to look that over. But also, it's easier often to drive to Fergus in April than it is in February. And did have our 2022 budget for approval. And then yesterday, I attended the construction meeting for our Resource Recovery Center virtually. The weather has put a little bit of a hiccup in, in terms of progress out there, but it continues to move on swiftly out there. We had discussion on the XL power, which, which route makes the most sense for it to come into that facility. We'll continue to work on that. I think Tom was going to resubmit our requests on that southern side of it. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. The only report that, or the only committee report I had was yesterday, the construction meeting regarding our transfer station. And I did that, it was all done virtually, and I had a terrible connection. I was in and out about every two minutes. So I missed a lot of the conversation or discussions. And I will follow up. There were a couple of key things that we will be bringing back before the board that I was able to get out of the meeting. But with that, Steve, we'll go to you.
I think, Mr. Chair, last Tuesday, I met with Sheriff emptying a series of issues in the Sheriff's Department. That afternoon, I met with Anna Moore, the vaccination and testing discussion we had at Board. I also met, later that day, we did send an email out to all of our employees requesting vaccination, which Darren reported on the, the response to this point. I met with, or had a phone conversation with Robert Wilson on a number of shared issues, including the triple RDC. The, on the 22nd, to follow it up with a number of questions that some staff had in regards to the county email on vaccinations. Just to note that Minnesota OSHA is going to be hosting two webinars after the first of the year, January 4th and January 7th, just to provide some additional insight once their final decisions are made in Minnesota. Again, it can't be any less than federal OSHA. It can only be more stringent. Yesterday, I met on the Resource Recovery Facility Owners Meeting. That's been addressed. Again, just of note, I know that Kathy and staff mentioned this morning of the vaccine clinics. We also have some vaccine clinics on the, on January 6th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for Moderna, and also Pfizer, and Pfizer for 12 years and older, and Pfizer for five and 11 years old. Would note, this past December, that Shelley Jeffers retired. We requested, or we followed her request not to be recognized in any way here at the Board, but I wanted to let you know that she has retired. And Renell Fennell has been selected to be the new Becker Clay Court Administrator. And so I want to thank our, thank, thank Shelley for all the great years. She was very good to work with with the courts. We did kind of have our first weather incident yesterday. Just a reminder for, for our citizens that Clay County has a inclement weather policy, which, which does, we do not close as a facility. Having said that, our, our policy also allows discretion with our, with our employees in making decisions of their own safety. And so as you saw yesterday, in those situations, we do send out generally on our social media platforms and Facebook, just recommendations that you call ahead if you're looking to come in to, to receive service. It was pretty light yesterday, although the DMV still had, had quite a few people that, that were there. This is our last board meeting of the year. Next week, we'll be having our state and the county, well, our chair, vice chair elections. We'll schedule our board, board meeting date, times for 2022. We'll designate a newspaper for, for posting our information as a county. And we'll also have a discussion on committee assignments. I did this morning leave the most recent information that, that Colleen had. And so if you would take a look at that over the next week, and if there's any feedback that, for your discussion as a committee of how you want to move forward in 2022, you can use that to, as, as a resource. I think just, just lastly, if I could, just want to, just two quick thank yous. And one, I think, to this board for your continued leadership. I think, you know, a year ago at this time, vaccinations were on their way, and we certainly were hoping that we maybe wouldn't be in the role that, that we are in. You guys have continued to, to provide important leadership guidance and in direction in, in operations and policies for myself and department heads and at a time which things haven't always been clear. And so, so we appreciate that. So thank you. And the other thing I would just, I think, just acknowledge our staff. Again, it's required a year of flexibility and resiliency, and our staff have been and continue to be the backbone of, of what we do. And, and so I think it's important that while we spend a lot of time during our board meetings and committee assignments talking about the impacts of COVID, there's still continues to be a lot of great work that they're doing every single day in meeting the needs of our citizens. And so I just wanted to point those two points of thanks. And that concludes my report.
All right. Well, thank you. And certainly on behalf of our board, we would also, I agree with you and thank all of our staff for the, for the year that we've had under, again, under, in a lot of instances, some trying times with changes that, that are going on even worldwide. And for our, a lot of our managers who are experiencing the headaches of, of staffing issues, it's, it's even created even more stress on them. And we will continue to monitor and do what we can to help in those areas moving forward. So, thank you. Anybody else have any, anything today? With that, we wish everybody a happy new year. Stay safe, and we'll see you all in January. We adjourned.